Okay, good morning. Welcome to the June 30th, 2020 public hearing, public meeting of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. I'll call the roll. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Yeah.
Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Okay, all set.
Thank you, Rich, and welcome everyone to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's June 30th Public Hearing and Public Meeting. Today, we will have a public hearing and public meeting items for both the Research Department and the Preservation Department. And we will be starting the day with the Research Department. The first two items will be public meeting items. There are items that the Research Department is proposing to the Commission to calendar for a future public hearing. And any members of the public who wish to watch the proceedings during this public hearing should do so on our live stream on our YouTube channel, so that we don't exceed the maximum capacity that we can handle under the Zoom meeting. And the first two items will be followed by three items that will be having a public hearing, three items proposed by the Research Department for public hearing, and we will be taking testimony on those three items. So if you wish to comment on those items, please enter the Zoom webinar when the, when those items come up. And you can look at the estimated time on our public hearing and public meeting agenda posted on our website. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Research, Caitlin Musmichael, to take us through the first items on the public meeting agenda.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. Item number one this morning is LP 2645, the Harriet and Thomas Trusdale House, 227 Duffield Street, Brooklyn, block 146, lot 15. Item proposed for the Commission's calendar is a Greek Revival-style rowhouse constructed circa 1847 to 50 and extended in 1933 that was home to abolitionists Harriet and Thomas Trusdale from 1851 to 63. For more than a decade prior to the Civil War, 227 Duffield Street was the home of Thomas and Harriet Trusdale, abolitionists who had moved to Brooklyn from Rhode Island in 1838. They owned and lived in 227 Duffield Street from 1851 to 1863, and the property remained in their family until 1921 for a period of 70 years. While a two-story commercial extension was added in 1933, the house retains its 19th-century form and historic fabric above it, and its significant association with the Trusdales and the history of the abolition movement in Brooklyn prior to the Civil War is still legible. The proposed landmark site is tax map block 146, lot 15, between Fulton and Willoughby Streets in downtown Brooklyn. In 1838, Thomas and Harriet Trusdale moved from Providence, Rhode Island, to 14 Hick Street, in Brooklyn Heights, close to Fulton Ferry. Thomas owned and exported and import firm on Pearl Street in Manhattan. Both Thomas and Harriet were active in the movement that opposed slavery and were founders within several anti-slavery organizations that were established during the pre-Civil War years, including the Rhode Island Anti-Slavery Society, the New England Anti-Slavery Society, and the Providence Ladies Anti-Slavery Society, respectively. The Trusdales were acquaintances of William Lloyd Garrison, a leading abolitionist during the period, who also worked for women's rights. Garrison's papers include a letter documenting a visit to the Trusdales' home in 1840, when they lived on Hick Street. This former home is shown by the arrow above this 1884 Sanborn map. It was demolished for the construction of the Brooklyn Queens Expressway. From 1851 to 63, Thomas and Harriet Trusdale lived in 227 Duffield Street, now downtown Brooklyn. The Trusdales continued to support the abolition movement during this time. Records show Thomas Trusdale was associated with the American Anti-Slavery Society from 1853 to 63 and supported the National Anti-Slavery Standard from 1855 to 1862. The three-story brick rowhouse was built circa 1847 to 50 as part of a row of both wood and brick two- and three-story houses with basements and front and rear porches, as seen in the 1855 Paris map on the left, when the house address was 141 Duffield Street. Harriet died in 1862 while living here, and Thomas moved to New Jersey in 1863. The Trusdale family retained the house until 1921, resulting in a 70-year association with the property. The map on the right shows it in 1915, by which time changes to the neighborhood as it developed into Brooklyn's downtown retail and commercial center were evident. Since its time associated with the Trusdales, the house's front and rear porches were removed, and between 1932 and 33, a two-story commercial addition was constructed extending from the front of the building, which involved demolition of the front facade behind it. A certificate of occupancy from 1933 at the Department of Buildings lists a store and luncheonette within the first two floors with apartments above. Above this extension, however, the original 1850s facade, fenestration pattern, window surrounds, and cornice remain. Research staff carefully studied 227 Duffield Street and the Trusdales within the historic context of 19th-century abolitionism. This timeline, developed for our interactive story map, New York City and the Path to Freedom, shows some of the milestones leading to the abolition of slavery in 1865. In the early 19th century, Brooklyn's economy relied heavily on the storage and export of agricultural products shipped from southern slave-holding states. Yet, its waterfront and large population of free African-Americans made it a hub for abolitionist activity. This activity took many forms and involved people across social, religious, and racial spectrums. Brooklyn's busy waterfront was the entry point for many freedom seekers who stowed away on ships to escape slavery in the South. Many of them were sheltered by Brooklyn abolitionists and either stayed in Brooklyn or traveled north to upstate New York or New England, and many went on to Canada. The Trusdales lived at 227 Duffield Street from 1851 to 63, a time marked by more clandestine abolitionist activity due to the harsh penalties on those who broke the 1850 fugitive slave law. Verbal accounts that 227 Duffield Street was a stop on the Underground Railroad have not been verified after extensive research and physical analysis. However, historians agree that housing fugitive enslaved persons was a dangerous and secretive activity, making Underground Railroad activity difficult to document or verify. In our study, we identified several individual landmarks and historic districts in Brooklyn that reflected its abolitionist history. The designated houses on Hunterfly Road in Weeksville, for example, shown here, embody the history of an early African-American community that was a safe haven for free and enslaved African-Americans. The Brooklyn Heights Historic District includes several homes and churches associated with prominent abolitionists like Henry Ward Beecher, James Pennington, and Louis Tappan, all shown here. This research shed light on the important history represented in these designated sites and led us to the determination that 227 Duffield Street merits consideration for designation as a rare surviving home of known abolitionists for over a decade. These two views show the current condition and urban context of 227 Duffield Street in downtown Brooklyn. While its context has changed dramatically and its lower floors have been altered, the building's form and remaining historic fabric still convey its 19th-century residential character and its association with the Trusdales and Brooklyn's important abolitionist history. Because of the building's significance as the home of the Trusdales, well-documented abolitionists who resided there for more than a decade and owned the property for over 40 years, its representation of Brooklyn's important role in the abolition movement before the Civil War and the legibility of its remaining 19th-century form and historic fabric conveying this significance, the Research Department recommends the Commission calendar 227 Duffield Street in Brooklyn for consideration as an individual landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Kate at this time? If you have any questions, please raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Okay, not seeing any questions. I just want to start off with a few comments and...
Sarah, I'm sorry. It looks like Commissioner Devon, Commissioner Goldblum has a question.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was, I was navigating my way to the hand raising portion.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure I understand if we designate this as a, as an individual landmark, we're going to indicate that the subsequent additions are not significant and need not be preserved, right?
Yes, I think that that is the thinking of the research staff right now, and of course, we would discuss that more in detail during the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so this, you know, as you all know, would be our first step in recognizing this property, and it's the first formal step in the designation process. Since its earliest days, the Commission has designated sites reflecting African-American heritage in New York City, and we continue to strive to tell the full, full story of the African-American experience in New York City. In addition, we have been increasingly seeking to address difficult histories in our designations, documenting when there was institutional racism and racist government policies. And one aspect of our research has been the people and the institutions engaged with the anti-slavery movement before the Civil War, whether through political and religious activism or by housing freedom seekers. And in light of this work, the mayor has asked LPC to consider 227 Duffield Street as a potential individual landmark. We have looked at this property previously and renewed our review over the past several months. The research staff has studied numerous materials on the building to understand the history of the Trusdales, known abolitionists, the history of the abolitionist activity in downtown Brooklyn, and the physical condition of the building. And because of the rarity of landmarks designated specifically for their concern and their connection to abolitionist history, and the fact that consideration of the property aligns with our commitment to tell the complete story of the African-American experience and heritage in New York City through its designations, especially in this current moment, I'd like to urge that we vote to calendar this property for consideration as an individual landmark. So do others have thoughts they'd like to add before we move to a vote? Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron, please go ahead.
Thank you. This is clearly a very important step, but I don't have a comment. Obviously, it's not time for comments right now. But one very broad question, if you could clarify. And, and this, I've been thinking about this in reference to Stonewall and so many other important designations. How do, do we distinguish, or does the Landmarks Law distinguish between designation related to the special quality of particular history of, of occupancy? And as, as opposed to or distinguished from use? In other words, we don't, we don't designate, you know, we don't...
Right.
Use, if you could clarify for me the language.
So I think for, you know, I mean, the Landmarks Law allows the Commission to designate buildings and properties and sites that are architecturally significant, but also historically and culturally significant. And culturally significant and even historically significant can often have to do with a specific event or use. And so this is something that the Commission thinks about all the time. And, and when we are designating a property, how do, you know, for cultural reasons, maybe even only for cultural reasons, you know, so what should the criteria be? As a regulatory agency, our task is then to protect designated properties from, and, and by requiring appropriate change. So historically, what the Commission has thought about in terms of the importance of an event or association is that, you know, that that event be a significant influencer or, or game changer in our, in history, that, that the association is pivotal or for a long period of time. And finally, that the condition of the building still retains its enough fabric and appearance to, that are associated with those, that significant event. So in other words, that with Stonewall, those buildings had been very altered when they became the Stonewall Inn. And so it was those, actually, that sort of, the alterations to that building that made it still retain its appearance to that event, and therefore, there's fabric there for the LPC to regulate. And so it's really that the physical condition still evokes or appears as it did at the time of the significant association.
And Sarah, if I can just add to that, and just to follow up, but in, in terms of regulation, so going forward, that's where the Commission really is not regulating it based on use, but can, but can say something is inappropriate if alterations related to a use adversely affect the integrity of the building and, and its sort of representation of the significance for which it was designated. So in that sense, use becomes something we would consider, like, you know, a small house. This was a residence. If someone wanted to make this into a, you know, a movie theater and needed to blow out everything to make that use change, we would say, no, it's inappropriate. Not that, you know, because the changes are so great. So we are looking at the use as relevant in terms of, you know, the event for which it might be designated. And after that, it forms a little bit of a context for what changes would be appropriate.
Right, but you see why that's a bit confusing to me, just in terms of this language of use, because we don't apply the use lens to any of our other regulatory standards, right?
Well, that's why I wanted to explain the difference going, you know, there's the designation aspect, and then there's the regulatory aspect.
Right, and just on the regulatory aspect, just as an, by way of example. If, say, a, a commercial building or a former warehouse building in Tribeca is being converted to residential use at the ground floor, the Commission has approved changes that retain the appearance of a storefront at the ground floor, even though there's residential use behind it. So the Commission has not found it appropriate to do small residential windows at the ground floor of a building that was designated for its commercial character and historically had a storefront at the ground floor. So we would allow, you know, some film behind the glass or, you know, things like that to allow privacy, but the overall appearance would have to read as a storefront. And similarly with Stonewall Inn, the fact that the windows were made smaller is directly connected to the historic use and, or to the significant use, right, the reason it was designated. So if a new store wanted to go in there and make it a very large glassy storefront opening, we would find that inappropriate, likely. Does that help? Okay, all right, thanks. Commissioner Bland? Commissioner Bland, did you have a question?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I was muted. In no way would I oppose this calendaring at all. And in no way do I disagree with the really articulate discussion I've just listened to. But I want to also say, as I've said in the past, regarding these culturally significant landmarks, it's a slippery slope, isn't it? New York City, almost every block in New York City has some culturally interesting thing that happened on it. And, you know, not just in Manhattan, but as we're seeing now in Brooklyn, I'm sure other, other parts of our city as well. So Addie's thoughts and, and comments are important for us to remember because we can make a case, as we are now, for what seems to be a very socially progressive current event that is, that is, you know, engaging the whole country in conversation. But there could be other kinds of less progressive, less, we might find less salubrious cultural events that also occurred in buildings within New York City. And it's just a slippery slope, I think, and I just want to add that commentary as we, rightly, in my judgment, proceed with perhaps more culturally important landmarks as opposed to just visually or architecturally important works of, 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 of our city.
Yeah, and I think maybe instead of thinking of it as a slippery slope, I think it's a challenge that we have to rise to. And I think, you know, yeah, I think that the, you know, I think it's something the Commission has sort of grappled with over the years. When you have a property that's culturally significant, you know, there are, there could potentially be so many. So as a regulatory agency where we will have regulatory control in perpetuity, what standards do we apply? We need to sort of establish consistent standards that we can apply across the board. And so these things that I described, like the significance of the event or the association, the longevity, and if it's, you know, somebody's home, and then the physical appearance, the sort of integrity to that period has always been a set of standards. And I think that, you know, we'll discuss this more as we get into the hearing phase of this process. But I do think that as we continue to think about telling the complete, full story, even the more complex or uncomfortable parts of, of our history, we do need to carefully evaluate which properties we will be considering. And so, you know, I do agree with you. I think it's a challenge, and I think we have to just sort of rise to that challenge.
Thank you.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Sarah, I have two questions, really. One, who owns this building?
It's owned by a private developer.
Okay. And, and two, following on Michael Goldblum's comments, if that later accretion, which, which actually seems to have a, a greater longevity than the Trusdale residency there, if, if that is in fact somehow not listed as part of the designation, does that mean that the owner can pretty much go through and change the storefront and do anything they want to with it in the future with, with no regulatory oversight by us?
Well, if the property is designated, the entire property is under our jurisdiction, and we have regulatory oversight over any changes to the building. The question of whether it's a contributing factor to this designation is something that, again, we'll discuss through the hearing process. But to the extent that it's identified as a feature that doesn't contribute to the significance, that may allow for more flexibility in the future, but that would be subject to the Commission's still rules and regulations as well.
Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, so, you know, I think that there's a lot that we'll discuss as we move toward a hearing phase. But I think, given the rarity of properties designated specifically for this reason and, you know, our current goals and the mayor's request that we consider it, I would move that we vote to calendar this for a public hearing in the near future. So Commissioner Bland, would you make that motion?
I'll move.
And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
So.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the property is now calendared, and we'll hold a public hearing in the near future. Thank you. And Kate will move to the next item.
Okay. Item number two this morning is LP 2613, the Angel Guardian Home. Oh, I should move to that slide. There we go. The Angel Guardian Home at 6301 12th Avenue, Brooklyn, block 5739, lot 1 in part. The item proposed for the Commission's calendar is an orphanage designed by George H. Streaton in the Beaux-Arts style for the Sisters of Mercy and built in 1899. The Angel Guardian Home in Diker Heights, Brooklyn, was designed in 1897 by George H. Streaton for the Sisters of Mercy, who operated it as an orphanage until the 1970s. Prominently elevated on a raised lawn surrounded by a historic stone wall, the monumental institutional building with its distinguished design combining elements of the Renaissance revival and Beaux-Arts styles occupies an entire block front of 12th Avenue and stands out within the surrounding low-scale residential neighborhood. It is an enduring reminder of the role played by religious social service organizations in Brooklyn's early 20th-century history. The proposed landmark site is located on 12th Avenue between 63rd and 64th Streets in Diker Heights, an area which, as you can see, has no other landmarks. The proposed landmark site is a lot in part encompassing the footprint of the historic main building and its extensions and its entire 12th Avenue frontage. Historically, part of the town of New Yutrect, shown on the left in an 1873 atlas, the neighborhood of Diker Heights remained a sparsely developed suburb that was considered part of Long Island until it was annexed into the city of Brooklyn in 1894 and incorporated into Greater New York City in 1898. Diker Heights began to develop in the 1880s and early 1890s when regularized blocks and lots were created. By this time, the Sisters of Mercy owned most of the block on which the orphanage sits, as shown in this 1890 map on the right. The Sisters of Mercy were a Catholic religious order founded in Ireland in 1831. The image on the left shows their convent in Clinton Hill in the 19th century. They arrived in New York in 1846 and opened their first orphanage on Second Avenue in Manhattan in 1860. They expanded their charitable activities in the city in response to an increase in New York's Catholic population in the late 1800s. They renovated a convent they built in Clinton Hill, shown here. They opened a campus in Syossett, Long Island, as an orphanage for boys, and in 1880 and 81 acquired the large parcel of land in Diker Heights. In 1897, the Sisters of Mercy hired the architect George H. Streaton to design the Angel Guardian Home on the Diker Heights site facing 12th Avenue. The historic map on the left shows the site in 1907, and the photo on the right shows the building circa 1920. At its opening in 1899, the Angel Guardian Home originally consisted of a four-story orphanage building with two one-story extensions meant to serve approximately 200 children under the age of seven. Within a few years, the main building was expanded with additional stories added to both the north and south wings, containing a chapel and school and administrative functions. In addition to housing children waiting for adoption placement, by 1906, the Angel Guardian Home also offered a residence for unwed mothers. A nursery, boilerhouse, and other utilitarian structures were also eventually constructed on the site. And by the 1920s, the orphanage and its gardens were extended to encompass the entire block, surrounded by a stone and brick wall. The Angel Guardian Home was designed by George H. Streaton, who was born in Brooklyn in 1864. After studying at Cooper Union and Cornell University, he embarked on a successful career as an ecclesiastical architect, working throughout New York City's five boroughs. Catholic churches that Streaton designed include, among others, St. Joseph's Roman Catholic Church in the Greenwich Village Historic District shown on the left, and the Cathedral of St. James in downtown Brooklyn, a designated New York City individual landmark shown on the right. The main building that has the orphanage has a full-block frontage on 12th Avenue, where its elevated position and monumental civic scale make it very prominent in its surrounding neighborhood. The impressive ensemble consists of a four-story central section with a two-story north wing that can The impressive ensemble consists of a four-story central section with a two-story north wing that contained classrooms and offices and a one-story chapel to the south, all on a raised base. The original central portion of the main building blends Renaissance revival and Beaux-Arts style elements with the red brick facade with limestone trim topped by a copper cornice and distinctive mansard roof with dormers. The north and south wings are in the same style and materials. The building has ornate carved limestone door surrounds, corner coins, and arched windows, evoking the sophistication of European classical and Renaissance architecture and expressing the importance of its social service mission. The primary facade of the freestanding building faces 12th Avenue. The side facades of the flanking wings face 64th Street, shown on the left, and 63rd Street on the right. And the rear facade faces into the site. The rear facade is clad in brick with limestone coins and simplified trim. A tall brick chimney and several modest utilitarian extensions have been added over the years, in addition to fire escapes. The Sisters of Mercy served the Diker Heights community for close to 120 years. The Angel Guardian Home orphanage operated until 1973, with services focused on foster care and adoption services. During the 60s and 70s, the sisters broadened the focus of their social service work, continuing to offer residence for unwed mothers on the site and later senior assisted living. They sold the property in 2018, stipulating certain uses to serve the community. The elegantly designed Angel Guardian Home, with its monumental civic scale and adept blend of Renaissance revival and Beaux-Arts architectural details, is symbolic of the importance given to social services in the progressive era and the role of the Sisters of Mercy have played in Brooklyn for over a century. The distinctive and remarkably intact main building is prominent within the neighborhood of Diker Heights, and the research department recommends the commission calendar it for consideration as an individual landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. And commissioners, this is a large site, and the building's prominence derives from its architectural quality as well as its monumental scale, spanning the entire width of the block and its sighting back up on a hill, surrounded by low-scale residential buildings, and, as Kate said, no other landmarks. Other portions of this full block lot are being developed by multiple owners, including the School Construction Authority and a private residential developer. And we felt that it was essential that the main building be preserved in combination with these other changes. And so that's why we're bringing it to you today. We also wanted to ensure that the commission had some control over a portion of the development that will abut the building. And in speaking, speaking with the owners, we were able to secure their agreement to file a restrictive declaration that would make a portion of the lot abutting the main building subject to design and massing criteria. And more information on the details of these design controls will be presented at a future public hearing, at the future public hearing. But I just wanted to let you know that, that in addition to proposing this site for consideration, that we also have worked closely with the owners to secure some design control over the area most closest to the lot that would be considered. So are there any questions? If you have any questions, raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Otherwise, I would like to move toward a motion to calendar this. Commissioner Holford Smith, I'm not seeing any questions. So Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to calendar?
I'd make a motion to calendar.
Okay, and Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the Angel Guard, former Angel Guardian Home is now calendared and will also hold a public hearing in the near future for this item. So thank you. And Kate will move to the public hearing agenda for the research department.
Okay, great. I'm going to pass control to Tim. And item number one this morning on our public hearing agenda is LP 0637A. The Beth Hamadresh Hagadol Synagogue, originally Norfolk Baptist Church at 60 Norfolk Street, aka 60 to 64 Norfolk Street, Manhattan, block 346, Lot 37. The item proposed for a public hearing is the proposed rescission of the landmark designation consisting of the vacant lot formerly the site of the Beth Hamadresh Hagadol Synagogue, also known as Norfolk Street Baptist Church, and presenting the item is Tim Fry.
Good morning, commissioners. Having a problem advancing? There we go. Good morning, commissioners. As you're aware, 60 Norfolk Street was vacated in 2007 due to serious structural issues and in 2017 suffered a catastrophic fire that severely damaged the building. This proposal, as Kate mentioned, is to rescind the landmark and the landmark site because the designated building has been demolished. In a series of votes beginning in 2017, LPC eventually approved demolition of the entire site due to hazardous conditions. In its June 2019 vote to approve full demolition, the commission found that the loss of historic fabric due to the fire, structural issues, and partial demolition of unstable masonry had resulted in a building and site that no longer conveyed significance or integrity as an individual landmark. Because the building has been demolished, as seen here on the left in a current photo, the research department recommends the rescission of the designation of the landmark and the landmark site. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, not seeing any hands raised. We'll see if there is any public testimony, and our executive director Lisa Kurzavage will be managing the, the public testimony. And so if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so that Lisa can identify you.
And while we're doing that, we did have one person sign up to speak, and I will call her first, as we do, and that's Linda Jones. And Linda, I'm bringing you into our room. And you can just unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose, and then just state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners, and I am Linda Jones, representing Friends, the Lower East Side. Here, I guess, to say goodbye to a beloved landmark. The loss has left a hole in our neighborhood. It's a terrible example of what can happen when an important landmark is abandoned and neglected. Eventually, the synagogue was left unsecured, open to vandals who set fires inside. Even the first fire was not taken as a signal to secure the building. I went to see it burning. It was spectacular, and neighbors gathered in sorrow. We could not believe our loss. As time went by, efforts were made to save something, but it was not possible, so now it is gone. Soon a useful new building will replace it, and people will forget what was there before. I want to thank LPC for endeavoring to prevent the demolition by neglect and to salvage something. Let's take this as a lesson and not wait too long on other endangered landmarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, and then I do not see any other hands raised, and nobody else signed up to speak, so I think that's the end of testimony.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other final questions before we close the hearing, commissioners?
Sarah, I do want to mention we do have one letter in opposition as well.
Okay, thank you, from an individual.
Correct.
All right. Okay, so not seeing any questions, why don't we close this hearing? And Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
And Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is now closed and we'll move to a discussion. And as was stated in the public testimony, this is, you know, this was a very sad loss of a landmark. And as was also mentioned, we were working very closely with the synagogue to to stabilize the synagogue and make sure that it was not a candidate for demolition by neglect. And unfortunately, then the fire happened and subsequent tragedies. Commissioners, you have all been involved for a couple of years, as was stated in Tim's presentation, and we did, I think, work hard to try to approve demolition in a very systematic way to ensure that no fabric that couldn't be saved wasn't saved. And ultimately, you know, the building had its final collapse and the commission approved its full demolition. So as there is no building there now, it's a real loss, and thankfully, something that happens only extremely rarely to our landmarks, but a significant loss from our landmark group. And, but as there is no building there now, I think that it makes sense to rescind the designation of this site. Does anyone else have any thoughts? Many of you were actually at the site during the time that we were reviewing its partial demolition. No, okay. So if there are no other thoughts, and I think we should make a motion to de-designate. And Commissioner Chapin, would you make that motion?
Yes. This is a motion to rescind Beth Hamadresh Hagadol Synagogue, originally the Norfolk Street Baptist Church, aka 60-64 Norfolk Street.
Yeah. Actually, I'm just wondering if you have the latest version of this, because my version actually says motion to amend. So.
No, 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 it's a motion, it's, it's a motion to rescind.
Okay.
The others, the others are amendment, that's right.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah.
Based on the record and the discussion, I move the Landmarks Preservation Commission rescind the landmark designation in the landmark site for the former Beth Hamadresh Hagadol Synagogue, originally the Norfolk Street Baptist Church, aka 60-64 Norfolk Street, Borough of Manhattan, tax map, block 0346, Lot 037, designated as Lot 376, Lot 13. Finding that because the loss of historic fabric due to fires, structural issues, and demolition of unstable masonry, the site no longer conveys significance or integrity as an individual landmark. And therefore, the site no longer possesses a special character or special historic or aesthetic interest or value as part of the development heritage and cultural characteristics of New York City.
Right, and Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
Second it.
Okay, thanks. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland? Oh, he's recused, sorry about that. Commissioner Shemir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lutfi? Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I would ten in favor, none opposed, and one recused. Motion carries.
Thank you. Kate, we'll move to the next item.
Okay, item two this morning is LP 0005A, Kingsland Homestead. Sorry. 143-3537th Avenue, Queens, block 5012, Lot 60, and its former site, block 5275, Lot 1, 111, 112, 115, 117, 119, and 120. The item proposed for a public hearing is the proposed amendment to the landmark designation of Kingsland Homestead, moved in 1968 to rescind the former landmark site and designate the current location in Weeping Beach Park as the landmark site, presenting again is Tim Fry.
Good morning, commissioners.
Shall I advance this for you?
Yes, Kate, could you, next slide, please, thank you. The Kingsland Homestead is one of the oldest buildings in Queens. The landmark was moved shortly after designation, and this proposal, as Kate mentioned, is to amend the landmark designation to reflect its current location. Kingsland Homestead was named after Captain Joseph King, the son-in-law of Charles Doherty, who constructed the property around 1785 in the Dutch colonial sl- style. Next slide. Kingsland Homestead was designated in 1965 at 4025 155th Street, block 5270, Lot 14. And in an early decision, LPC approved Certificate of Appropriateness Number 9 to relocate the landmark to its current site at 1433537th Avenue, block 5012, Lot 60, which is also the site of the landmark, the Weeping Beach Tree. Next slide. As seen in the photo on the left, the former lot was subdivided into seven lots for the construction of a series of brick road townhouses in 1970. On the right is a photo of the landmark in its new location where it operates as the headquarters of the Queens Historical Society. It's maintained by NYC Parks, which acquired the park site in 1925 and expanded the park to its current size in 1976. Next slide, please. The maps on the right of this slide illustrate the relocation of Kingsland Homestead. The left map shows the original location of the landmark. The map on the right shows the location of the subject property within Weeping Beach Park. The research department recommends the commission amend the landmark site of Kingsland Homestead to reflect its current location in Weeping Beach Park. This would entail rescinding the designation of the former site and designated the land beneath its current location as its landmark site. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Tim. And I'll just note for the record that three commissioners are recused from this item, Commissioner Chapin, Commissioner Gustafson, and Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioners, and they are not present for this presentation or discussion. So for the other commissioners, do we have any questions for Tim at this point? Okay, so let's see if we have any public testimony. And if you are in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Lisa to see if we have anyone who's signed up.
Yes, we do have two people that signed up. I'm going to bring John Krotchak in first. He was one of the two that signed up. And John, if you just want to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose, and then please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear and see you.
All right. What I'm trying to do is figure out how to actually read my testimony on the same screen. It's gone to full screen.
John, if you go to the top and where it says view options, you can hit exit full screen.
Ah, thank you. Exit full screen.
And then you should be able to toggle back and forth.
Okay, there it is, right there. Thank you, thank you. Chair. Good morning, Chair Carroll and members of the Landmarks Commission. My name is John Kraschak. I'm the Executive Director of the Historic House Trust, nonprofit organization that works in partnership with NYC Parks to support twenty-three historic house sites on parkland throughout the five boroughs. And most of them operate as traditional historic house museums, including this one. I'm here today to testify in support of the proposed amendment to the designation report for the Kingsland Homestead, an individual landmark and one of our member sites. The house, for over fifty years, has served as headquarters for the Queens Historical Society, a nonprofit organization that maintains an archive and library on the site and provides important educational services, public exhibits, and programs that focus on the history of the Borough of Queens. The amendment will address the public record for the significant Queens landmark, identifying its present location in Weeping Beach Park. Kingsland is one of three individual landmarks located in close proximity to each other, near the heart of historic Flushing, and is also joined by the progenitor, the Weeping Beach Tree, which was mentioned earlier, as well as the bound house, all three stones throw from each other. This trifecta of landmarks serves a critical role in telling the rich history of Flushing and the borough. I would like to thank the staff of the Landmarks Commission for addressing this matter and to encourage the commission to vote in favor of the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Um, next, we'll bring in Bronca Ducknick. Bronca, I've brought you in as a panelist. And you can just unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose. And please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, good morning, hope you can hear me all. My name is Bronca Ducknick. I'm the Executive Director of the Queens Historical Society. Thank you Commissioners for your time. And I just wanted to say a few words about Kingsland Homestead. As John Kraschak mentioned, for more than five decades, now fifty-two years, Kingsland has been the headquarters of our historical society. Its rooms are used for exhibitions, community events, and school programs, promoting research into the socioeconomic aspects of all Queens history, from pre-colonial to contemporary past. And the Queens Historical Society maintains an extensive collection, archive, and library in Kingsland showcasing over two hundred and fifty years of Queens County. Again, we're a member of the Historic House Trust of New York, and Kingsland represents a typical Long Island farmhouse of the late eighteenth century. Flushing's Native American inhabitants, M'Kinnicaw Community, prized the area for its fertile soil, extended growing season in proximity to water sources. And of course, the European colonial settlers capitalized on Flushing's value and the location of where Kingsland is right now. And generally, Flushing is prime agricultural area to create thriving nursery businesses, which the residents of Kingsland actually owned and operated from mid to late nineteenth century. Just to point out that Charles Doughty was from a prominent Quaker family. They, to be sort of fully open, they owned two enslaved African Americans. And at the time, Flushing had about twenty percent of the African-American population. Doughty and his fellow Quakers decided to, with a decree in seventeen seventy-five, to free all the slaves. Again, these are Quaker families who decided that. And Kingsland inhabitants, Doughty family, and later on, Joseph King's family, who is his son-in-law, married into Murray's and Mitchell families that were significant for the Underground Railroad and many other abolitionist movements. There are women, I just wanted to point out, were prominent teachers, nurses, and even in the early twentieth century, among the first female doctors. So Kingsland is a truly significant home. And the story of Kingsland's historic journey is a mark of the underlying principles of change and adaptability. And it survived twice the encroaching real estate development. So I would say that Kingsland is a living testament to the LPC's principle of cultural and architectural preservation. And therefore, we would like to support a vital goal of designating the current location next to the, in Weeping Beach Park, next to the landmark, Weeping Beach Street Three. And thank you so much for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I don't see anybody else signed up or with their hands raised, so I think that's it.
Okay, thanks. And Rich, did we receive any additional written testimony?
We did not, no.
Okay, thanks. All right, so any final questions, Commissioners, before we move to close the hearing? Okay. Not seeing any questions, let's go ahead and make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Bland, would you make that motion?
I'm moved.
Okay, and Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
Great, and all in favor of closing the hearing, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Others?
Aye.
Any, all right, any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is now closed and we'll move to our discussion. And, you know, this is really more of a housekeeping matter. This is a property that has, was moved decades ago and has continued to be regulated by us. It's coincidentally, was moved to another landmark site, which made that easy. But for having, for the purpose of having accurate sites and landmark sites and for clarity and accuracy, I would move that we make this motion. And so if you don't object, Commissioner Luttrell, would you read the motion?
Sure. This is a motion, Kingsland Homestead, Borough of Queens. Based on the record and the discussion, I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission amend the landmark site of the Kingsland Homestead to be Borough of Queens, tax mac, map, block fifty-twelve lot sixty, in part, the land upon which the building resides, finding that said landmark was relocated pursuant to LPC Certificate of Appropriateness number nine on June ninth nineteen sixty-six. And the former designated site, Borough of Queens, tax mac, block fifty-two seventy lot fourteen, no longer possesses a special character or special historic or aesthetic interest or value as part of the development heritage and cultural characteristics of New York City.
And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
We second the motion.
Okay. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Yes, Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBensher?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with eight in favor and none opposed, and if you're recused, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you, that's approved, and we'll move on to the next item.
Item number three this morning is LP zero three seven, three one seven A Hamilton Grange at four fourteen West one hundred and forty-first Street, Manhattan, block one nine five seven lot one forty, and its former site, block two oh five zero lot four. Item proposed for public hearing is the proposed amendment to the individual landmark designation of Hamilton Grange, which was moved in two thousand and eight to rescind the former landmark site and designate the current location in St. Nicholas Park as the landmark site. Presenting again is Tim Fry.
Again, good morning Commissioners. Alexander Hamilton House, also known as the Grange, is a federal-style house named after the Scottish home of Alexander Hamilton's paternal grandfather. The landmark was moved after designation. And as Kate mentioned, this proposal is to amend the landmark designation to reflect its current location in St. Nicholas Park. Next slide. In this map, obtained by the National Park Service, you can see that over its lifetime, the building has been moved three times. In the center map is the location where Alexander Hamilton erected the house as a country retreat on thirty-five acres in eighteen oh one. To the left of that is where in eighteen eighty-nine, the house was moved five hundred feet and operated as a chapel and later a rectory for the adjacent St. Luke's Church. And the area marked new site at the bottom left is where the National Park Service moved the property in two thousand and eight. Next slide. As seen in these photos at the time of designation and the nineteen eighty tax photo, the front elevation of Hamilton Grange faced the church with the side porch exposed as the street-facing elevation. In nineteen sixty, the Department of the Interior designated Hamilton Grange as a national historic landmark. In nineteen sixty-six, LPC designated the property as a New York City landmark. And in nineteen seventy-six, Congress passed legislation establishing Hamilton Grange as a national memorial. It was at this time funds were appropriated for its relocation and restoration. Next slide. In November of nineteen seventy-four, LPC designated the Hamilton Heights Historic District, which includes St. Luke's Church and the former site of the Grange. The former lot is indicated by the arrow. And the amendment before you today only applies to the individual landmark designation. St. Luke's Church and its entire site remains in the Hamilton Heights Historic District and within LPC's jurisdiction. Next slide. In nineteen ninety-three, LPC issued Certificate of Appropriateness, approving the schematic proposal to move Hamilton Grange from two eighty-seven Convent Avenue, block twenty fifty lot four, to its current site at four fourteen one hundred and forty-first Street, block nineteen fifty-seven lot forty in St. Nicholas Park. The map on the right illustrates the relocation of the Grange. The red rectangle towards the top of the map shows the original location of the landmark wedged between an apartment building and St. Luke's within the Hamilton Heights Historic District. The lower rectangle near the legend shows the current site of Hamilton Grange within St. Nicholas Park. Next slide. As seen in these National Park Service photos, the move was completed in two thousand and eight. And after a complete restoration, the landmark reopened to the public on September seventeenth, two thousand and eleven. Next slide. The photo on the left shows the site, the former site at two seventy, two eighty-seven Convent Avenue. And the photo on the right is the current site of Hamilton Grange within St. Nicholas Park. The research department recommends LPC amend the landmark site of Hamilton Grange to reflect its current location. This would entail rescinding the designation of its former site and designating the land beneath its current location as its landmark site. I'd also like to mention that Kate circulated a revised motion to you early this morning that fixed the typo in the name of the landmark. So please refer to that when considering this proposed amendment. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any questions for Tim about the site? Okay, not seeing any hands raised. I'm gonna turn to Lisa to see if we have any public testimony. And if you're here from the public and would like to speak on this item and you're in the meeting, please raise your hand so we can identify you. Thanks.
And we did not have anybody sign up to speak. And I don't see any hands raised. So I don't believe that we have any testimony for this item.
Okay, great. So Commissioners, if there are no final questions, we can move to close this hearing. All right, and Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed. This is also a bit of a housekeeping for the purposes of having accurate designation site and kind of a fascinating story as well. And as Tim mentioned, the former site will remain within the Historic District and under the LPC's jurisdiction. And this would be just amending the site for the individual landmark designation to reflect its current site in the park. So if there are no other questions, yes, Commissioner Shamir Baron, please go ahead.
So I'm assuming that these, the moves of these two buildings, Kingsland as well as this one, it was about putting it in a, in a park? I mean, what was the real motivation for the moves in both cases?
I think for Hamilton Grange, this was, the previous site was actually not its original location either. And it had been moved and sort of wedged in uncomfortably next to the church and turned to, so it was oriented sideways to facing the street. So yes, the idea, and this was, you know, at the National Park Service, was to move it to a park where it could orient, be oriented toward the street in a way that was more provocative of its historic manner and give it some free space. The, the move of Kingsland, I'm, you know, it was so many decades ago. I actually am not sure, I don't know, Tim, if you have any insight into how that was moved and why?
Thank you, Chair Carroll. Based on the documentation, it's not completely clear, but it appears that at time of designation, it may have already been threatened with encroaching development. And so as part of the designation, it was always considered to be relocated to another site that perhaps the city owns and where the city could maintain the property.
I think it was also involved with the Flushing line being built maybe in nineteen twenty-three? I don't know.
Okay, other questions? All right, so then I think we will move to make that motion. And Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to amend Alexander Hamilton House, aka Hamilton Grange, in the Borough of Manhattan. Based on the record and the discussion, I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission amend the landmark site of the Alexander Hamilton House, aka Hamilton Grange, to the Borough of Manhattan, tax map, block nineteen fifty-seven, lot one forty, in part, land upon which the building resides. Finding that said landmark was relocated pursuant to LPC approval, and the former designated site, Borough of Manhattan, tax map, block twenty fifty lot four, no longer possesses a special character or special historic or aesthetic interest or value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of New York City.
And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBensher?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, eleven in favor, none opposed, and the motion carries.
Okay, so that is amended to accurately reflect its current site. Thank you, Commissioners. And, you know, as I mentioned, I think at the calendaring, this is, you know, this housekeeping is something that we are doing. And we will incrementally be bringing you other items where properties have been moved, many of them also city-owned properties, to reflect their current site. Okay, so we're now gonna switch to the Preservation Department agenda. And I think we'll take a five-minute break to allow the transfer of control of the screen and to give you all a few minutes to stretch your legs. So we'll come back at ten fifty. Thank you.
The applicant is here, so we can begin when you're ready.
The applicant is here, so we can begin when you're ready.
Okay, and Commissioner Devonshire hasn't quite returned, but, um, I think we have everyone else. So Cory, um, when you're ready, let's go ahead and, uh, read the next item into the record.
Actually, I'm gonna be reading the items into the record today.
Okay, great.
So the first item for the Preservation Department Public Hearing Agenda is item number one. Docket number LPC nineteen dash four oh four four six, two thirty-seven, uh, dash oh two Hollywood Avenue, also known as tw- two hundred Hollywood Avenue in the Douglasston Historic District, Borough of Queens, block eight oh four seven, lot one, zone R one dash two. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness, a Mediterranean revival-style house built in nineteen twenty-seven. The application is to construct a rear addition, entrance portico and chimney, alter the roof, replace windows and regrade the side yard.
Okay, and the applicant has joined the meeting. Uh, please state your name for the record and click on the screen to begin controlling the presentation, and you may begin. Frank, if you click on the screen, you can advance slides with the arrow keys or a scroll.
I believe he is muted as well.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry, it took a little while.
That's okay. Just state your name again for the record.
My name is Frank Quatella. I'm an architect. I'm here on behalf of the client Anthony Alessandro, the owner of, uh, what's known as two hundred Hollywood Avenue in the Douglas, Douglasston Historic District located in Queens. We're here today to propose work to this existing Mediterranean Revival Home for a rear extension, some modifications to the site, some repair for the exterior frassades, uh, roofwork and, um, some appropriateness as it relates to, uh, preserving some of the historic features of the building. As you can see, the house here is located on the southeast corner of Hollywood Avenue and Center Drive. It's a freestanding, uh, two-story building, one family. Um, noted here in red is the outline of the current building and, and the shaded red area would be the proposed enlargement at the rear yard slash side yard according to the zoning. Okay. I'll just run through briefly the, um, requests that we're here for. And then I'll explain each slide by slide how we're, how we're working on it, starting from the Hollywood Avenue side, which is the bottom part of your screen. We're proposing to reconstruct the roof above the front entrance door. We're proposing to reorient the staircase from Hollywood Avenue back to Center Drive, which was how the house was originally built. We're proposing to redo and reconstruct portions of the roof, including the addition of a overhang or a soffit on the upper part of the roof for, I guess, better water prevention entering the building and, and weathering. Moving around to Center Drive, we, can you, can you see my cursor?
Yes, we can.
I'm just making sure. Okay, moving around to Center Drive, we're actually adding a walkway from the public sidewalk to the front door or the, the, uh, the newly created stairs up to the front door. We're eliminating a depressed tile patio that was also fronting on Center Drive. And we're converting it to a walkway which links the driveway to the main entrance to the building. We're going to remove some pavers or some, I guess, not, not historically correct, uh, pavement from the driveway and reinstall concrete, linking the driveway again to the side yard or rear yard. We're increasing some of the patio space at the rear yard. We're adding, um, some hoods to the front entrances along Center Drive. There is a garage there. There is a, a door at the basement, which is an entry level into the building as well. And the addition, the newly created addition at the rear and side yard. In addition to that, features to the actual building, the site improvements would be obviously landscaping, which is sort of, uh, inherent in the district and sort of required. As a, um, in addition to that, we're actually recreating and reconstructing this rear retaining wall, which is approximately five and a half feet tall between the neighbor and ours, our property. It actually serves as a, um, the existing condition doesn't serve the property well because it allows a lot of drainage and runoff and, and sediment to, to come into our property, which is the reason why we're here today as well. And we're gonna reconstruct it, make it a little bit higher, recapture some of the water and put some positive drainage in the site. Next slide. These are the site plan existing conditions. As you can see, the staircase located on Hollywood is going to be reconstructed and moved along the center. Reconstruction of the retaining wall, pavement, hardscape, softscape. Um, here is the current line of the first floor, which is open at the basement level. We're proposing to enclose the basement level and put an addition at the rear, including a chimney as mentioned previously. These are historic photos, I believe, from nineteen four thirties and then nineteen eighties. The earlier photograph in the nineteen thirties shows the house as it was originally constructed, which did not have, uh, a portico or a canopy above the front door. But it does indicate that the staircase was in fact, um, reaching the front entrance and the front door from center and not from Hollywood, which is sort of typical in the Douglaston Manor District. But we're proposing on this application to remove this staircase which enters Hollywood on the north side of the property. We're going to redirect the staircase, reconstruct a platform, uh, right in front of the front door, which is on the north side of the property, bringing it down to Center Drive. We're also going to reconstruct the roof, which is above the, the front portico, because it is actually added on, not, not so much, uh, with permits or, or we don't really have much history on it. But we're, there's a, a drainage problem that this house is experiencing, not only from the large, um, trees around the property, but I guess it was poor judgment on previous owners to do additions on the building without, um, studying how the roof would run, uh, runoff water and, uh, provide some weather protection for the building. Again, some of the notable features on the building are these very difficult to, to read, but there's some metal scroll work here above this French door case made. There are planter boxes with metal scroll work holding up the planter boxes. We propose to, um, remove them, um, refinish and reinstall them in addition to adding some new ones above the hoods at our garage door and, um, basement entry door. Next slide. Existing conditions of the building, this is looking southeast. And as you can see from the photograph, there are no overhangs or eaves on the building. It's causing a problem in the building. It's causing water to drain inside the stucco in between the walls, and it's causing some, some spalling. Here are the, is, am I allowed to zoom? Can I zoom? Oh, yes. Oh, no, I can't. Oh, wait. Whoa, 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 sorry. There we go. I don't think we can zoom. But anyway, as you can see here, here's the metal scroll work, a faux balcony, some planter boxes with some scroll works, all matching. There's a lot of deterioration that's happening around the building, as mentioned previously, from a lot of large trees around the building, which doesn't allow proper sunlight and, and the building to dry after it is raining. But also there are some portions of the, the roof that are flat, again, causing water to pool, causing water to find its, I guess, path of least resistance and, and find its way into the building, which is causing some serious problems here. This front entryway, as you can see from the photograph as well, and probably a little bit more so here, because it faces north, does not get direct sunlight. It causes a lot of problems in the winter time with freezing, thawing, ice, um, some mold and, and I guess foliage growing around the building that doesn't really do, do, do well to the, uh, the justice to the building at all. Next slide. Okay, some of the conditions, this photograph on the left from Hollywood looking west is at the eastern side of the property. This is the higher part of the adjacent property, which our property from here is about five and a half, six feet lower than. And that retaining wall here is what's holding the soil back. But as you can see, the wall is very, very old. It's built out of stone and some loose mortar. Water drains through the wall. Not only does it, um, come over the wall, but it goes through the wall, creates some ponding conditions here at the side of our building, and it doesn't allow for proper drainage. Here are some of the other conditions that are caused by the, the building not having overhangs or soffits for the water to be collected and then diverted from the building. Again, looking from Center Drive, the metal scroll work, the planter boxes, we propose to restore the garage door as well. Here's the basement entrance. Here's the depressed patio that I was mentioning earlier. Has an area drain, doesn't really serve its purpose. We need to actually get rid of this. Part of our proposal is to actually create a walkway, not a depressed patio, and allow for some drainage, um, to a dry well. This pavement will be removed and replaced with concrete. Next, oh, how do I go back? Okay, sorry. As I mentioned earlier, the existing one-story extension is open on the bottom at the basement level. Our, uh, application is proposed here to enclose this, enlarge this, and restore the stucco. Next. Okay. A view from center looking at the building, you could see here again, there's, uh, an opening at the basement level. There's an existing open canopy or open, opening into the basement level. We're proposing to enclose it, looking from center or the rear yard towards the building. Proposed front elevation and existing front elevation. We're proposing to raise the pitch of the roof, reinstall new terracotta, provide all the proper flashing. It will match, um, the existing roof that's there now. Again, on the chimney, we're proposing an overhang to, um, allow for the drainage, rainwater and snow so want to be prevented from going into the building. All of the existing windows on the building were previously approved, uh, under, uh, an application that we're going to keep. We're going to, um, restore the windows, replace the windows as well, but we're not, not part of this application, but it is shown on our drawings. Existing condition from Center Drive, proposed condition. Here's where the enlargement's happening. So we have the existing unenclosed basement level. We're proposing this part to be enclosed here. Oh, you'll see it in the next slide with the plan. It's going to have a flat roof on it with a roof terrace. We're proposing a chimney there for internal cooking appliances, which are in the plan, you'll, you'll see a little later. Here's the existing condition of the depressed patio by the door. We're proposing to level out the pavement, provide proper drainage, prevent water from seeping into the building. Here's the existing front entrance way, which, from here, you can clearly see that there's a problem with water and drainage. We're proposing to raise that roof, provide the proper pitch, redirect the stairs to Center Drive, as it was shown in the earlier tax photo. This retaining wall is going to be enlarged from its current condition. It's going to be the similar material to match the building in color and style. And it's basically enclosing the backyard, which is semi-paved. Behind that, on the eastern side of the property, if you could see here beyond, the proposed new reinforced concrete retaining wall, which is stone clad, going to replicate the existing wall that's there, which is a loose stone and mortar. And we're going to do it out of reinforced concrete and then clad the wall with stone and, uh, and mortar. Existing and proposed rear elevation from center. This is providing access to that newly enclosed basement. Here's the flat roof portion. We're installing a door to provide access to the roof terrace as well. Here's the new location of the retaining wall. The older version of the retaining wall was further into our property. We want to capture some of that space back, allows us for access to the rear door on the property. And again, to reconstruct the wall properly for drainage purposes and soil retention. This slide is indicating how deficient the wall was or how, how it did not serve its proper purpose. So this area, as you can see with the red arrows, shows the existing condition and how water would be ponding here without allowing the water to drain out of the building, would actually frequently come into the door and flood the basement. So what we're proposing to do is regrade the property, install area drains, divert the water to a dry well and provide positive flow of water to the rear yard, which is semi-paved, and again, divert the water to a dry well. Looking from Hollywood, looking west, here's the existing front entry way with a roof that's not tied in properly to the existing helm. We're proposing to raise the roof, tie it in properly, provide flashing and drainage as well as the overhangs and soffits, so the water doesn't penetrate the stucco or get behind the wall and seep into the building. Here's the floor plan. As I was saying before, this is the area of the drip and proper drainage. We're proposing to move the wall, provide the proper drainage. Here's the existing condition at the basement level, which is an unenclosed, one story above. We're proposing to enclose it and enlarge it, providing a family room or accessory use to the owner, a little mudroom entrance. And the chimney would be coming up off of this. He's gonna do an indoor fireplace. No other changes in the building besides the staircase. This is the existing, uh, first livable floor, showing bedrooms and kitchens. No real change here besides creating a roof deck. Existing skylights will remain. Flat roof below is actually a patio or turning into a roof terrace. Here's the existing condition of the roof, which is a four-sided hip. We're proposing to tie the hip into the existing, um, gable roof. Again, flashing, drainage and so on. Existing building sections showing the unenclosed portion at the basement with a flat roof above. We're proposing to extend it as indicated by the shaded area with a roof terrace. Same thing here, flat portion of the roof. We're proposing to tie the roof in here. Just to go back on the exterior portions of the building, um, due to somewhat of a deterioration of the stucco and the, and the, and the problem with water runoff, we're actually going to propose to repair the stucco throughout the entire building on the exterior, not only where it's, um, spalling, but we have to tie the colors in, we have to tie the, the flashing in, the roof, the underside of the roof and so on. So that's going to be part of this application as well, which is indicated on the drawings. Here's some materials, the underside of the soffit, matching the color of the windows. The hardscape will be exposed aggregate concrete, sort of common in the Douglasston Manor Historic District. The proposed, um, materials at the rear retaining wall, which is approximately five and a half feet tall, retaining soil from the eastern side of the property down to outside. Terracotta roof would match the existing red clay and, uh, the half-round aluminum gutters, which would also match the color scheme of the windows and trim. Existing conditions from Hollywood, showing the staircase, front entrance. There's a photo montage of what it would look like. Redirecting the staircase, obviously restoring some stucco, some cement stucco on the building as well. Moving around to center, you can see the same thing, existing condition with the staircase going towards Hollywood. Proposed condition photo montage indicates the staircase here. And if you get an indication of what's going on at the rear of the property with that basement extension and roof terrace. Existing condition at the rear, proposed condition, showing some pavement, dark browns windows, roof terrace with, um, metal rail, a door and windows on a previously approved landmarks application. Some other buildings in the neighborhood that have similar styling and similar windows and some architectural features such as planter boxes, uh, terracotta roof and stucco finishes, we're showing how most of them have a significant overhang, if not even in excess of what the zoning would permit, just because of the dates of the buildings. But we, 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 we sort of are mimicking the styling here, not as extreme, but the overhang's probably closely more related to this, this one here down at the bottom right on Arley. So we're not uncommon in what we're doing. Let's go back. Nope, that's it too far. Here we go. Another photo montage from existing from Center Drive, existing condition, proposed condition. The white dashes would indicate how the building would fit into scale. On the right-hand side, you'll see this retaining wall. There's currently an existing retaining wall there. It's not so much covered by any foliage or shrubbery. Some overgrown things here, but we're proposing to reinstall the wall, extend it further south towards our adjacent property, which is also higher in elevation than us, so it will act as a retaining wall of sorts. And additionally, after the wall would be completed, would be covered with some greenery, some shrubs or evergreens. So it would never be exposed, uh, fully to the street. Here's the indication of where the stair would fall onto Hollywood with the pathway to the public sidewalk. How we did this one, right? And we've passed this, right? So I guess that's, that's where we are. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for the thorough presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? If you do, please raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Okay, Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
I have a, a question on your stair. And I think you did a good job on the building. The question is the, the, this is an architectural question about the flamboyance of the stair. is this an architectural question about the flamboyance of the stair and 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 the change of language, if you will? Why, why, why did you change it? Why did you think it was necessary? Now, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just curious about your thinking.
I I guess you're referring to the flare at the bottom of the stairs opposed to being straight or ending straight?
Yeah, the curve, the curving.
The curving would would
It hits the path that that leads to the to the sidewalk, that whole composition. What? It's just an architectural question of why not straight?
Sure. Obviously, it's a preference for the owner. We did various studies, several studies on how this there would be terminating at the level of the grade with walls, without walls, with handrails or or walls that act as handrails. And I thought that sort of a little bit of reference back to the arch top windows. We could bring some of that curve or that styling back into the stairs opposed to being very geometric. We we added some some flair to the bottom to sort of bring the staircase relating back to the actual building itself by the round top windows. That's that's clear what is it's not as very as severe it might seem in this in this photo montage. It's a very slight curve at the bottom, but that's kind of a throwback to the curved windows and and some of the curve styling that the building has in elevation. It's very slight here, if you could see it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Goldblum.
Hi, thanks. A couple of of minor questions. This soffit. Your detail shows that it's it it follows the line of the roof with a with a rafter tail exposed. Does it have a texture to it?
Let me get to the slide, if you don't mind. Here, so the photo montage. You're talking about the actual rafter tail or the underside of the of the soffit?
The underside of the soffit. So question one is, does it have a texture? And question two, you call it out, the rafter tail is being made out of fipon. Can normally, we don't we try to avoid using materials like like foam for for that kind of thing. Can you explain why you feel that's an appropriate choice?
It might not be that appropriate, but it's for lack of a better product or without fabricating one in the field, like out of an AZEC material or a mahogany or or a like a very, very dense hardwood. We'd definitely be willing to explore that. Not not the soffit so much because I think it would be inappropriate and it would just cause for maintenance. But the rafter tail, absolutely, we can explore options on different materials, keeping the color and keeping the trim to match the gutters, the windows and and some of the other smaller trim on the building. But the color would stay, but absolutely, we could put something in that might be a little bit more appropriate as far as the styling of the building. Wood would be an option.
So what is the texture intended of the soffit? Is it like a kind of a board and batten?
It's it's going to replicate wood. Yeah, so it will have a wood grain texture.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, other question?
Last. Last thing. What is the texture of the stucco? Sorry.
It's a it's a sanded finish. It's not polished, not smooth. It's going to match what's there now. Let me see if I have
Not a hand trowelled or or
Well, it's not, it's not going to have
Dash or anything really kind of
It's it's sort of a sanded finish, but this is this is repair after repair. If you see this photograph, so this is sort of deteriorated. Let me see if I can find one that's a little bit better. All of this is peeling and cracking. It's very hard to depict. I guess that one there, hold on, let's go back. If you see this stucco back here, that's sort of original, it's sanded finish. It is actually applied by hand. It's not polished and it's not perfect. It does have some, I guess, hand installed quality to it, I would say. Definitely not a a polished, perfect, clean edge application. It will have texture.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so not seeing any questions at this time. I think we'll turn to Lisa and see if we have any public testimony. And if you're in the meeting and would like to speak on the item, just raise your hand so that Lisa can identify you.
Carol did sign up to speak, so.
Okay. Um, just before I begin, I wanted to let the commission know there's not an option today to raise your hand in the Zoom panel, just FYI. Kelly Carroll for Historic District's Council. While the expansion of this house is modest and appropriate, there are several details of this proposal which require further examination. First, moving the entry to face Center Drive is not problematic, but the proposed splayed staircase appears grandiose and alien to the simple nature of this house. A straight stair would relate better to the existing architecture. There are railings proposed for the new balcony on the addition and along the proposed retaining wall, which introduces another foreign element that does not preview previously exist within this composition. These railings should be simplified or eliminated. The parapet treatment at the balcony would better serve this house's aesthetic and the retaining wall's lock coverage calls undue attention to itself. Finally, there is evidence that the stair originally faced Center Drive, which is likely why there is a historic step in the curb on this street. Despite this step's existence, introducing substantial paving across the lawn to the street seems like a path to nowhere. The proposed stair will connect to the driveway with paving that runs alongside the house, rendering this new path to the street futile. Thank you.
Thank you.
Apologies about the hand raising that you should be able to raise your hand now. Um, but Kelly was the only person that signed up and I don't see anybody else.
Okay, and Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We have a resolution from Queens Community Board 11 recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Cotella, would you like to respond to the comments? I think they were a little again about the stair, but also the amount of paving in the landscaping and the extent of the retaining wall and the railings.
Okay. So yes, in response to starting from the walkway or the pavement at the the front yard at center, we are, we are actually diminishing the amount of hardscape or pavement on Center Drive by eliminating that depressed walkway, which is sort of an eyesore and not well maintained or drained. But we are, we still need to keep in mind that we need to link the driveway to the basement entrance or the front door. So that that's why we are reducing the the amount of payment. Then again, we also have to consider how the building front entrance will be served by the public or visitors to the building or whatever, the the owners of the building. So we need, we need, we do need access to the stair, even though we redirected it. We still should provide access to this to public sidewalk. In response to the flare at the bottom of the stair, it could be studied again. We could go back and revisit that and sort of simplify certain things. But handrails, I believe, were required and in our discussions with landmarks, we did propose parapets in lieu of handrails and it just made it too massive and and out of scale with the building. And that's why we resorted back to refining the 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 plan to have metal handrails opposed to parapets, both on top of the terrace and staircase.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask you to just to briefly talk to us a little bit about the windows. Your notes say that there was a previous approval. Just tell us what the windows are going to be.
Yeah, and just I I think I think there was a last minute change in the proposal to replace the windows. I believe has been eliminated from this application and just not, that's not reflected in the comments. Is that correct?
Okay, yeah, so the windows, over the course of the past few months, we've been going back and forth trying to change the size or find a manufacturer or brand that would actually fit. Because the previously approved landmarks windows were preferred by their current owner. We've resorted back to going and honoring that approval, keeping it without any change. So we've decided to take the window portion of this application off and just keep the previously approved landmarks window application and restore the windows that way. The brand of windows, I believe, were Appella Lifestyle window. I think I don't have control of the screen. Yeah, I don't have control of this.
The previous approval allowed for the replacement of the windows with a new Pella wood window with simulated two divided lights. Is it aluminum clad?
Aluminum clad, wood up, wood interior, aluminum clad exterior, right?
Great, okay, thank you.
All right, commissioners, any other questions? All right, not seeing any other questions. I think we can move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
A motion to close the hearing.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And you know, there are several components of this application. As noted, the the windows are no longer part of the application. But as you think about your comments, we have the, you know, the front entrance and stoop change. We have the roof eve line change, we have the rear yard addition and the side entrance and reconfiguring the walkway and paving, both the side and the rear. So with that as a framework, why don't we start our discussion? And Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start?
Sure. I think generally, this is a good application. I think in general, it makes the house brings it closer to its historic condition. I think one of the major problems with the house is the windows. And I think that the applicant's reversion to an earlier approval where they're using simulated two divided lights and a much more historically appropriate kind of design is going to make a big difference on the house. I think that I guess I share people's concern with the flare of the of the stair, but I I can live with it. I think if the applicant wanted to revisit it, it would certainly improve it. But I I don't think it's critical. For me, the most critical important things about this can be handled with the applicant and staff. And those are first, that the the cement stucco texture be carefully reviewed before it's done. It's very hard to do this kind of texture nowadays. It it's not just a sanded finish. It's actually a a hand trowelled faux rusticated kind of finish. And you got to have someone good to do it or otherwise it'll look like a total butcher job. It's very important that that the staff work with the applicant to make sure that that's going to be the right thing. The second is I would take the applicant up on his offer to explore using traditional materials for the soffit and for the rafter tails, using foam rafter tails is certainly something that I in my history here, we've tried to tried to avoid. There's certainly no code requirement to do it. So I think that it would be, it would be to the betterment of the district and the and the house. If if traditional materials like wood could be used for both the soffit and the rafter tails. There are lots of soffit materials available that are not, you know, pressed metal. That would be totally appropriate for the soffit. And and since he is, you know, the soffit's one of the biggest architectural changes to the house. And I think it's appropriate, but I think it has to be done in a historically appropriate way. I think the additions to the back are fine. The use of a segmental arch is a bit out of sync with this house, but since it's on a secondary facade, I wouldn't make a big deal about it. And I think that the changes to the landscaping are appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, thank you. I agree with many of Commissioner Goldblum's remarks. I want to thank the architect for a good, clear, thorough presentation. I think that the restorative features are good, including the entrance, moving the entrance to a more appropriate location. I support the actions that they're taking to address the water penetration to the house, including changes to the roof and also the changes to the wall, the retaining wall to and other areas to accomplish better site drainage. I think redistributing the patio to the back is appropriate. And the subsidiary, the addition I I find to be subsidiary and modest and actually making the that aspect of the house more symmetrical that is viewed from. So I I can approve the addition. I think that in general, the changes are aesthetically acceptable and they're necessary and appropriate. I agree that it would be helpful for the applicant to work with his staff on having the flare, make sure that the flare, if there is a flare, it doesn't at this end of the stairs, it does not call attention to itself. There could be some, the architect is stating that it's minor. And I think that could be worked out with the staff and also working with them on the materials for this stucco and the treatment of the stucco soffit and rafter tails. That can all be worked on with the staff. There are there are minor issues that can be addressed. And so in general, I find this eminently approvable with some minor work with the staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Well, I want to thank Commissioner Goldblum and Chapin for saying everything that has to be said about this application. I think it's a very good application, but I think that there are a few things that need to be tweaked. I think turning the staircase to the other street is appropriate. I'm a little concerned about the splay, but I again, I think that that can be worked out with staff. And I agree with Commissioner Goldblum about the rafter material, rafter tail material. Something more appropriate than than foam should be used there. But I think, you know, the other comments have really covered all the major points.
Okay, great. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I agree with all of the points that have been made.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I I have nothing to add except that I am a little bit more aggressive about my distaste for the splaying of the staircase. I think if it is that minor, let's just get rid of it and 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 make it comport with the with the style of the house a bit more.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
Oh, my issue is this stair should be be studied. And I think the the handrails, the thickness of them should be restored and go back to the existing handrail that we see in drive, the the guide rail on the on the terrace there, on the balcony. And I think it's a good, good solution and I think it's appropriate.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Luttrell?
Um, I agree with my fellow commissioners on all counts. I I do want to thank the applicant for the amazing care that's being taken to get rid of the water damage so that moving forward, this house can be preserved. All the work on the front, moving the walls. I think the addition on the back is much better architecturally, it fits better with the house. And I agree about the staircase.
That you agree that there could be some flare, but as long as it doesn't call attention to itself or?
I actually don't think there should be a flare. I think it has to do with the architecture. So that's my feeling.
Okay. Commissioner Bland?
You might not have realized that I went off air. One has to remember to keep his computer plugged in, doesn't it? But I'm back just in time. I I have very few comment, no comments almost, so much has been said, which I agree with. But I'm in the non flare camp if 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 that becomes an important issue.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with all what's been said by the fellow commissioners. I do feel strongly about the flare that I think that it really should be re-study and as well as the railing. And and Commissioner Goldblum said correctly that arch window in the back, even though it's not contextual in the facing the side, we can leave it as is or it could be re-study.
Okay, and Commissioner Devonshire?
I I don't have much to add to my colleagues' comments. It's always it's an unfortunate southwestern Sahara-like conditions architecture to the northeast where we have a lot of rain. That's always a problem with Spanish Revival houses. I I weigh in on the anti flare. I weigh in on the anti-flare movement here. But I would like to thank the applicant for taking good care of this house and the architect for moving in the right direction. Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so I think we have a consensus to approve this with some minor modifications to be resolved at the staff level, including, I think the consensus is to eliminate the flare. We have six, I think, for that already. And then to re-study the railing details, the material for the soffit and rafter tails. And then as always, to work on the texture of the stucco in consultation with staff. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you make that motion?
Sure. Okay, regarding 20237-02 Hollywood Avenue, also known as 200 Hollywood Avenue in the Douglaston Historic District, the applicant, the applicant altered the roof and regrade the side yard. I note that there was an approval of replacing the windows in November 15th, 2016. I also note that the building's scale, style, materials and details are among the features and contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Douglaston Historic District. And I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the work will not eliminate or damage significant architectural features, that the enlarged house will not occupy more than 30% of the lot. That the proposed addition, stoop and entrance hoods will feature materials, finishes and details, which are consistent with the house's Mediterranean Revival style. That the addition's modest footprint, limited height, simple massing and setback placement will help it remain a subordinate presence. That the reorientation of the stair will return it to its historical position and relate well to the placement of the entrance and hierarchical organization of the house. That the proposed changes to the pitch and profile of the roof at the existing front extension will be harmonious with the pitch and profile of the original adjoining roof. That the lengthening of the eaves will be a modest alteration, which will be compatible with the style of the house and will help protect the house from damage due to water infiltration. That the proposed windows will be in keeping with the windows.
They're not, they're not actually replacing the windows.
The proposed windows will be not replaced under this application. That the chimney will be simply designed and set back from the street facades and will be well scaled to the building, thereby helping it remain a discreet presence. That the proposed garden wall and railings will closely align with the height, in height with an adjoining wall at a neighboring lot and will be compatible with the house in terms of material finish. Tails, that the limited regrading of a portion of the side and rear yards increase in patio paving and replacement of the retaining wall from attracting the character of the house or site.
Side.
Will be largely in view from public thoroughfares, that the proposed pathway paving will be in keeping with paving throughout the historic district in terms of placement, material finish, that the work will not result in the loss of any mature trees or the presence of wide bands of landscaping along the edge of the property, which are significant characteristics of the streetscape throughout the historic district. I also recommend that the applicant work with the staff to make the following modifications. Number one, eliminate the flared design to the main entrance stair. Number two, review with the staff the railing design. Number three, review with the staff the soffit and rafter tail materiality to use historic materials. And number four, to work with staff to ensure that the stucco finish is a good match for the existing.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, and Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, eleven in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. So we are about a little more than a half an hour ahead of schedule and we're scheduled to start our public meeting agenda this afternoon. But because we are so far ahead of schedule, we are going to move the first public meeting item up to now and then we'll break for lunch after that. So Corey, will you read the first public meeting item into the record?
Well, before we read the first public meeting.
Caroline, yes, sorry.
I'm going to read into the record an item to be presented at a future public hearing. And that is docket number 19-03374, 1370 Dean Street in the Crown Heights North Historic District, Borough of Brooklyn, Block 1215, Lot 18. And it's a certificate of appropriateness application, a Queen Anne-style semi-attached house designed by Gilbert A. Challenger and built circa 1885. And the application is to replace the stoop and install a barrier-free access lift and areaway paving. So with that, I will move on to the first public meeting item. And that is item number one, docket number 20-11118, 3 East 89th Street in the expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. Borough of Manhattan, Block 1501, Lot 5, Zoned R8B R1. And this is an amendment to a previous approval at a Neo-Renaissance-style townhouse designed by Ogden Codman and built in 1913 to 15. The application is to amend the plans approved at the public hearing of February 11th, 2020 to include a six-floor rooftop addition and altered design of the rear addition. And I just want to note that this is an amendment to the February 11th commission vote to approve a proposal to adapt the building to gallery, art gallery use and to support a request to the City Planning Commission for a modification of use in bulk. At that time, the commission heard concerns from the public about the size and visibility of the penthouse and expressed their own concerns with the prominence of the penthouse and voted to approve the proposal without the penthouse. The applicants have re-studied this aspect of their proposal and are returning to request an amendment to that approval to allow a more modest penthouse that is less visible than the proposal you saw last.
Thank you, Caroline. And just to clarify a little bit, we, in essence, we voted to approve the application to support the request for the special permit. And we voted to approve a proposal for most of the changes. But we did express some concerns about the visibility of the penthouse. And so we omitted that from the approval and took no action on that penthouse. So it's back today. They are here with some revisions in response to the concerns that were raised at the hearing.
Okay, the applicants have joined the meeting. Please state your name to the record. Click on the screen to control the presentation slides and you may begin.
Perfect, thank you. This is Cass Stackleberg of Higgins Quays Park and Partners. I'm joined by Raphael Venoli and Jim Herr, Raphael Venoli Architects, as well as our client, Genie Greenberg Rowatton, who is also available if there are any specific questions. So thank you for hearing us this morning, was going to be the afternoon, this morning. As we shared with you in February, the project, as Caroline noted, is the rehabilitation of 3 East 89th Street. The project involves a change of use to allow for commercial art gallery use, which requires a 74/711. And also involved, along with the restoration scope, infill of the side yards and a rooftop addition, which was, we eliminated from the proposal as part of the vote in February.
And Cass, can I interrupt you just for a moment? I do need to make a motion to open the proceedings to allow you to speak. No, my apologies. And I'm muting everyone quickly. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
A motion to open the proceedings.
Okay, and Commissioner Chapin, would you second that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so proceedings are open, you may proceed, Cass.
Sorry, I won't restart. So if we could just go to the next slide, Jim. Just to remind you, the project team obviously involves our client, Genie Rowatton of Salon 94. And this would be the location of her new gallery. Raphael Venoli Architects, Stuart Beckerman, Land Use Council. And we're also working with Robert Bates of Walter Melvin Architects as part of the restoration scope. And just to give you a brief update on that, all the exterior survey work across the building facades had been completed. And the restoration package is under review by landmark staff, who have submitted drawings, shop drawings, specifications. So those are under review. And we hope to get that work started really as soon as possible. Next slide. So just reminding the commissioners of what we presented back in February. So this is an axonometric on the left and a section on the right from our February 11th public hearing presentation. At that time, we were proposing a rooftop addition at the sixth floor with a sloped skylight window and the sides finished in stucco. And that space was to house an artist's residence, which is really a key component of the project's program. And in listening to the commissioner's testimony again from February, while I think most of the commissioners thought that the concept of the atelier or the studio made sense programmatically, there was concern among some of you for the scale of that addition and in particular, the visibility of it, thinking it was too much for the building to handle. Others commented that an addition might be appropriate if it were its own sort of designed element separate and distinct from the building below. And then the hearing concluded with a vote and also the opportunity to come back with a redesign for that sixth floor at a public meeting. So since February, we've been working together on a design solution that preserves the artist's studio concept as a key component of Salon 94's program. But also working on a redesign for that addition. And so what we'll share with you today is a new, considerably smaller addition, a standalone element on the roof as part of the artist's residence program. The footprint, as I said, has been reduced. The setbacks off the front facade, as you can see here from February, it was 30 feet and the new setback is 56 feet. And the addition is also now setback off the east facade. As you'll see, it is architecturally distinct and distinguished, we think. And as I mentioned, the visibility has been reduced. And just finally, before we get into some of the design revisions, I do want to just mention that we have been continuing to engage with groups in the community, presentations and conversations with Church of the Heavenly Rest, Friends of the Upper East Side, Carnegie Hill Neighbors. And the project, even with the design revisions, continues to enjoy support from a number of local institutions. And I believe letters have been submitted from the director of the Guggenheim, Richard Armstrong, the Noye Gallery Jewish Museum and Performa. Next slide. So as we talked about in February, the project involves converting the interior spaces to galleries. So the photo on the left illustrates the use of the second floor salon facing onto 89th Street for exhibition. That requires a change of use through 74/711. But also really key to Genie's concept for the building and for her gallery is the concept of the artist's residence and the idea of engaging the public with the art-making process. So this is very much important and truly why we're back today, because it's so key to the program of the project. The project also will include a significant art research library. And the photo on the right references the Judd Foundation's library in Martha, Texas, which will be a part of this partnership going forward. Next slide. So turning to comparative axonometrics. So on the left is the view from the public hearing that we shared with you in February. And on the right is the reduced and redesigned distinct rooftop addition that we're proposing today. Obviously, it's a very simple design. All the systems and the elevator are now all encapsulated into this single volume. It's set back 56 feet from the front elevation and 10 feet from the side elevation, which obviously reduces its visibility. And let's go to the next slide, Jim. As well, I'll just mention that there's been an elimination of, on the left, the approved two-story studio off the north elevation has been eliminated. And the side yard infill, the north elevation of that side yard infill has been modified to have a chamfered window facing north to bring daylight into those interior spaces. Jim, I don't know if you and Raphael want to add anything at this point or if I should keep going?
I think we can keep.
Okay, great.
Hold on, let's talk. Got to unmute Raphael.
This is Raphael. Thank you so much for giving us this. We thank this point. I think that Cass mentioned this particular view that Genie has about the living-in artists. And it has already started being, prior to the pandemic. I mean, you know, an extraordinary successful event. Two things from a purely architectural point of view. I think that the image on the left tended to, I think, forcibly to extend the architecture of the building, whereas the second image on the right clearly identifies this thing almost as a portable object. And the notion is that we create sort of like a, like a very transparent structure, as if it was a conservatory. We have developed a structure that it is self-supported to. So there are no columns inside. I mean, the walls and the roof are treated all in glass, which is, I think, an effective way of hiding the penthouse or the elevator and the mechanical spaces over the stair. It sort of sits well behind the profile and the leading edge that we had before. And in a series of pictures that we'll show you in a second, not just the visibility, but in whatever moment you take a peek, for instance, from one of the windows on the buildings next door, you would see this sort of jewel thing. I mean, it's a perfect square plan. And there is no distinction between the exterior of the building and what happens inside. We have developed the structure quite carefully. Also, the material is one that, you know, previously in the architecture of greenhouses, it was almost impossible to do because, you know, this is all fabricated specially. The module repeats itself. It is shadowed behind in order to avoid the reading of the penthouses. And the shading is produced internally with automatic shades that close themselves on the diagonal pattern at night. So it is from an environmental point of view, a very efficient structure. I mean, you know, the K value of any of these surfaces is better than the stucco below, for one thing. And still maintains this notion that hopefully the terrace would be well-planted and become part of that intended vocabulary. Jim, would you like to go through the views now?
Let me pick up and just touch on some of the background and the source material for us. So this slide, across the top are images, obviously, on the north side of 89th Street. And the property on the upper left image, you can see 3 East 89th Street. As you may remember from the February hearing, the building was built by Archer Huntington as an extension to his row house on Fifth Avenue. And then in the 1940s was purchased by the National Academy of Design. And then the institution continued to grow across the side to the east. And the National Academy of Design built 5 to 7 East 89th Street, which you can see in the middle on the top row. And this is what we refer to as the annex of the studio building. And so this building, interestingly, has a screen wall in a diamond pattern brick, sort of a diapered pattern across the upper portion. And then the photo on the upper right shows behind that screen wall the sort of sawtooth angled skylights that exist on the roof of 5 East 89th Street. So the site, as we talked about in February, has this history of growth and change, but also, I think, interestingly, of art-making integral to the institution that occupied these. Integral to to the institution that that occupied these buildings. And then the images across the bottom, obviously. Greenhouse and conservatory structures and sort of multi-light studio windows and lattice. Lattice work that one sees in garden rooms. And so all of these are sort of informing. The design for for the cladding of the addition at 3 East 89th Street. So let's go to the second, the next slide. And then on the right, this is the top right is the the skylight. At the Guggenheim directly across the street. And this is this sort of complex skylight with subtle diagonal forms. Set within this sort of multi-light configuration. The images on the lower right. Again, conservatory glazing, sort of window features. And all of that has sort of informed this diagram grid. Structural system that is the cladding for the addition, both the the annex. Diamond pattern of brick directly next door, but also the sort of history of. Conservatories and rooftop studio features. Next slide, Jim.
So this is the the closer view of the of the rooftop addition, which shows a little bit more clarity. We have some slides later on about some of the details and the. Configuration of the system. And then you can see from the from the front of the building, as Cass said, it's set back 56 feet from the 89th Street facade. And we also set it back 10 feet from the easterly property line. Basically essentially sitting on the 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 parapet of the of the existing penthouse. And then there's a a low iron safety glass railing. That is canted to help reduce the visibility from the from the street. And as we go through the. As we go through the street views, which are. On the left was was the the previous six-floor rooftop addition. And then the middle is. Comparing view of the new new rooftop addition, which is based on the visual mock-up. That we did a few weeks ago. You can see there's considerably less. Less visible views is from the alleyway between 1085th and 3 East 89th Street. And on the right, as Cass mentioned earlier, we have done our survey work. So this is the scaffolding. On the on the 89th Street facade. Where we've looked at all the conditions of all the stone and the brick and the. Copper work and the mansard. And then with the. Image in the in the of the addition. On the easterly view from 89th Street. You can see also on the left was what we, what was the previous version. And on the middle image is the updated rendering based on the mock-up at the site. And there is a slot on Fifth Avenue just south of the Guggenheim. Where the a portion of the, a portion of the. Of the rooftop edition is is visible behind the existing chimney. We'll continue now to up Fifth Avenue, looking in between the annex addition of the Church of the Heavenly Rest. And the. The view in the middle is the updated image. Where we've, there's the two-story high masonry rear yard addition. The chamfered portion of the side yard addition is is further back. And this is the the last. View that we took a few weeks ago. Up on the promenade across the the reservoir. The views previously, you can see on the left slide was what we presented in in. In February with the six-floor addition and the two bulkheads that were above it. And then this is the. This is the new rooftop addition in the middle. I'm not sure if we're able to watch the video. But if if we, if we can, I can narrate that. I think it's on Cory's laptop.
I don't have a video.
Okay. That's fine. We have it, but it's a. I think it's, it's, it's fine. These are some of the detailed elevations of the of the rooftop addition. And on the, in the elevation, you can, on this portion to the north, which is basically on top of the existing. Penthouse is the shadow box condition that Rafael mentioned earlier. And the glazing, so that's recessed behind the millions of the of the of the grid diagram grid system. And the, we'll show you some more glazing details of how that of how that works. And then the in plan, you can see that. The northern portions of the of the artist residence actually have the elevator override. So that's a shadow box condition. And then also the stair. Is also a shadow box. And that stair provides access to the main, to the main roof. And and some of the details, as Rafael mentioned, there's a automated. Sun shade and privacy. System both horizontally for the skylight and vertically for the for the. For the for the enclosure of the walls. And then. As Rafael mentioned, there's a diagram grid structure, which is essentially self-supporting, like a like a cage. Is a reinforced shallow mulion that that. Makes it so we don't have to have internal columns for such a small space. There's a shadow box detail on the right, which has the shadow box and then the rated, the fire-rated. Partition of the shaft is 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 there. And then some of the glazing details. In the, in the rear yard, the north facade. Facade where we eliminated the glass, two-story glass studio structure. Which we're now exposing the the rear of the the building. We have a chamfered. A chamfered glass. Curtain wall, which allows the north light into the the research library. Portion on the on the fifth floor. And then there was the. Arts art storage viewing room on the fourth floor. This is just a comparative diagram so we can show you what changed between. On the lower row on the February presentation where we had. The glass, two-story high glass studio. It now, there is no, no more. Enclosure there. There's a roof terrace at the fourth floor. And below that is the same masonry. Extension that we had. And then we extended the side yard addition to. To encapsulate that north, that north view. And then the fifth floor that occurs similarly. And then on the new artist residence. It's about at least a half size of what it was. It's about 710 net square feet for the for the studio. The section comparison essentially shows. On the right is the proposed rooftop addition. It is encapsulating the elevator. The elevator override and the stair to the to the north portion of the addition. We were able to reduce the height. This was the previous bulkheads that we had proposed and were able to reduce, reduce that. These are the updated facade elevations. We'll just do, we'll run through this quickly, but. You can see how we we eliminated this rear glass box. The pavilion sits directly on top of the of the original. Facade of the rear of the building. And as we go west towards the alley. You can see that on the left is what we presented in in February with the stucco. Six-floor addition and the bulkheads. And then this is the elevator override and the pavilion on top. The north facade, basically. It's essentially how we stepped it stepped it in from the east 10 feet. And of course, that's recessed back 56 feet from the street line. And then as we circle around to the to the easterly facade, this is what we had in February. We've pushed back the the face of that rooftop addition, back 56 feet from the street. And also 10 feet from the property line. Some of the materials, the glass that we, as Rafael mentioned earlier, the glass is a is a low iron. Safety glass with a low E coating that's. Has the least amount of reflectance that we can provide. So it's much more transparent. And then the other material, other materials that we that we have on the on the project is essentially the same, where we have the. Limestone articulation, the face brick and the some of the lower level brick.
So I may just make a couple of final comments here, if I may. I think, you know. This project, we're focusing today on on the roof, but obviously the project involves. The restoration component. We talked about that back in February, the cyclical maintenance program, all of that. As I said, we're eager to get the restoration work going and and make that a key piece of the project. But I think. There there's sort of three key components, I think, to the appropriateness of what we're sharing with you today. And one, I think, is just. Remembering that this building is part of a complex. The building itself. Has sort of changed over time, particularly for arts-related uses. There was the the studio mansard skylight that was added in the 1920s. For Anna Hyatt Huntington's sculpture studio on the roof. There were the enlargements. For Egress stairs associated with the National Academy of Design. And then the whole, the way that the whole complex has worked as this sort of. Enlarged institutional series of buildings. The design, as we've discussed, is completely different than what we shared with you back in February. It's tied to both the articulation of the brick of the annex building directly to the east, which is. Very much about art production. That was a studio addition to the complex. You can see it on the right side of the image on the right. That we're looking at right now. That diagram grid system is really derived from that idea and also. The the idea of conservatory, conservatory and and studio additions on on buildings of this scale. And then finally, I think something important to remember is just the position of this building. In relation to the other parts of the historic district. The building is a sort of in an interesting. Part of the district. It's got directly to the left, the 1960s white brick. 21-story 1085th Avenue. It's got the Guggenheim directly across the street on the south side of 89th Street. So. This building exists as sort of an interesting, very variegated part of the the streetscape. And I think those components together, and then, of course, the the reduced visibility of this addition, I think, together. Allows this addition to sort of sit more comfortably on the roof. And we hope that you all could find that it's an appropriate addition and an appropriate modification to to what you saw in February.
Thank you, Cass. I also just want to note for the record that Vice Chair Plant is recused on this item, so he's been absent for this. Presentation and will remain absent during the discussion. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Or the applicant team? If you have any questions, please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. This is a public meeting item. However, as always, we welcome public comments on our public meeting items. Oh, I see Commissioner Jefferson has his hand raised, so we'll. We'll take that question and then move to Rich. Okay.
I have one question. If you go back to the plan, the studio. With the chamfered angled wall, angled glass wall, if you could show me that.
Yeah.
On the on the roof plan.
Okay.
So slide 19, I don't know. Is it easier, Cory, if you?
Yeah, because I I can't go backwards.
Jim, you should be able to click on the screen again and use your arrows back or scroll back.
Great. Okay, there we go. Thanks, Cory.
Okay, if you look at the 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 center diagram. It it seems to me that the, help me, the angle wall is to receive. Western light or western sun, is that correct? As and part of northern light coming in, correct? That's question one, and I assume that's the case. And is. When you look at it from from some of the slots, you see this angle wall, this angled glass wall. And if you just had the 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 glass go completely across the north there. You still get northern light into that studio. And you would have less seen from the slot. I'm not opposed to it. I'm just questioning the the thinking behind it, the 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 angle versus. Getting some western light versus north light and versus visibility from the slot.
Jim, you want to, Rafael, do you want to respond to that?
Sorry. Yeah, unfortunately, I didn't, sorry. Thank you for the question, but I couldn't understand your point about. Straight down the glass. I mean, you're saying. Need the angle? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, because when you. When you showed, there's a slot that you could look through and you see the angle glass.
Yeah.
And I was thinking, if you don't have the angle, you won't see, you you won't see the glass from far away. You just. See nothing.
By the same token, we wouldn't have the ability to peek into Fifth Avenue, to be perfectly frank. Plus, I think it belongs to a completely different vocabulary, sort of like a piece added to it. I personally thought that it was a distinctive detail as opposed to invading. The proximity of the rotunda next door. And yet it makes a point about this whole banding. Of approximately eight or 10 feet altogether, which is also added to the house, to the original house. So. If you if you flush it out, it would be. You know, you one would, one would say, well, why isn't it? In stucco then? You follow me? And and I. I I thought it was a great thing to have this, the complexity of the view in a diagonal from that. Particular room, which otherwise is pretty challenged, right, in terms of. Of what we can do with it. I mean, it's it's an event, if you will. I mean, I happen to believe that it's better than flat.
I I I I concur in that. I was just wondering about the difficulty of seeing it from the slot. From outside the building, but it's fine. The answer is fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, and as I was saying, we have received some letters commenting on the revised proposal. Which have all been shared with the commissioners, but Rich, I'll ask you to just summarize those quickly.
Sure. So we received letters in opposition from the borough president, community board, Friends of the Upper East Side Historic District. Carnegie Hill Neighbors and eight individuals. And we received four letters in support, including, as previously mentioned, from the Guggenheim and the Jewish Museum.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so before we move to our discussion, I just want to see if there are any final questions. At all for the applicant team while we have them. Okay, so not seeing any questions, I think we'll move to our discussion now. And as was stated at the beginning of the presentation, when we. Saw this application at the public hearing. We heard a lot of testimony in opposition to the size and visibility of the penthouse. And some commissioners also expressed concerns about the size and visibility. Some commissioners seemed open to the. Some commissioners seemed open to the potential for or the idea of some visibility if there were a different design, if design changes were considered. So the applicants have responded today with some revised design, a smaller, reduce the footprint of the penthouse and the mechanical equipment by sort of setting it back further from the front and the property line on the side and incorporating the mechanical into the cube of the penthouse. So it's overall been reduced. And in addition, they've eliminated the glass bay at the rear, which the commission approved. But we also heard some testimony about that at the hearing. So with that, we'll start the discussion. And I think Commissioner Chapin, you were one of those commissioners who were open to the possibility of some visibility with design changes. So I think I'll start with you and see how you're feeling. Okay.
Well, I I think that it is an improvement on what was previously presented. For one thing, I had a lot of concern that you could not distinguish the addition from the existing building, that it might appear to be part of the existing building, which was one of my greatest concerns. And I think that using a different materiality and moving it back is has addressed most of those concerns. I'm I want to take a look. I'm using my looking at it again on the on the internet at the moment myself to look at the visibility issues, which and how it appears that it is mostly currently visible from. Yes, the main problem, the main issue is probably from one side of Fifth Avenue where it's going to be against. I want to take a look at the visibility issues for a few minutes. But I think that if I can see that I find it mostly not very visible, except from limited viewpoints, that as far as the materiality and the the moving, the location of the addition, that that is more successful, in my opinion. So I'm going to continue to look at it for a minute.
Okay, sure.
While you take other.
Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith.
I want to thank the applicant for going back and looking at this addition and rethinking it. And I think that, given the the geometry of it and the fact that it's a glass box sitting on top of the roof and pushed back, that I can find this appropriate. I think even the visibility of it, I think, you know, it'll be visible, but I think it'll be legible as some discreet modern addition on top of the roof. And I I actually think that the slot that you see it from Fifth Avenue and that little peak of glass will be very interesting to catch your eye. And I'm not, I don't object to that, the fact that that's visible. So I I find this application to be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
I agree with Commissioner Holford Smith's comments, absolutely. I actually was pretty much in support of it as it was previously, but think that it's really interesting and improved. And the the distinct structure now on the on the roof reads as a thing apart. It's also interestingly kind of both has a kind of a both sort of domestic quality about it and yet a very institutional, that is, it's sort of its next, the next iteration of this building from a kind of more of a of a single family dwelling at some point to something that is institutional. I think that it it straddles those two qualities in an interesting way. Its visibility is not a problem. I think it's actually an asset in that we see it in a kind of a, it's a piece of it and can begin to understand kind of the abstract form, the the cubic form that it is. So I think it's very, very much appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah, I I I fell in the in the camp of not wanting it to be visible at all the first time around. But now that I'm seeing it in in a different materiality and I, you know, I'm looking particularly at this photo on on 11 in the middle, you know, it is disappearing more than I thought it would. And so I although barely there, I would find it appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson.
Um. I find it appropriate.
Okay. All right, and Commissioner Jefferson?
I I think it's a well-thought-through proposal and the architectural character of it is very strong. I I think it's appropriate and good.
Okay, Commissioner Lutfi.
I always appreciate it when we speak to our applicants and tell them what our issues are and they come back with a solution that is really at a, you know, a higher level than I could have expected. And I think this is a wonderful, a wonderful addition to this project. I think the the studio sits on top of the building almost like a little transparent pillbox hat. And the visibility, it's not, it it's not visible from the front and I just like invisible from other locations. I like the fact that they put the HVAC in the elevator inside. I love the reference of the diamond pattern to the building next to it and also reference to the Guggenheim. I just, I think it's wonderful and and a very appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I I echo the same sentiment. I think this is much improved and is very, very well done. I think the revised application design minimizes the prior concerns and the impact. And so I find that appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Devonshire, did you want to add anything else?
I think it's approvable.
Great. And Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree.
Okay, so I think we have a consensus to approve. And Commissioner Chapin, are you ready? Are you comfortable as well?
Yes, I I am. I think that I agree with the comments of many other commissioners about the design and the materiality, obviously, and that the which makes this a very interesting addition. And I'm satisfied that although it is visible, the roof line is very clear now. And there's no confusion about this being an addition and that has addressed my, you know, my major concerns. Thank you. I can support this.
All right, Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make the motion?
Yes, if you just, I'm having a little.
Oh.
I'll do it with my earbuds. I just want to put on these. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. That battery ran out. Okay, so in the matter of LTC 20-11 118, 3 East 89th Street and the Expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District, a neo-renaissance style townhouse designed by Ogden Codman and built in 1913, 1915. The application is to remember plans approved at the public meeting of February 11, 2020 to include a sixth-floor rooftop addition and alter design of the rear yard addition. I note that the style, scale, materials and details of the building are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Expanded Carnegie Hill Historic District. I further note that there is no change to the previously approved scope of work at the front and side facades. I recommend approval, finding that the expansions at the roof are in keeping with the building's history of historical enlargements in support of an arts institution, that the proposed sixth-floor rooftop addition is set back 10 feet from the east parapet and 56 feet from the south primary facade. It will maintain a sense of the building's historic massing, that the diamond patterned glass cladding of the addition will recall in a contemporary manner, the diapered brick pattern of the adjacent building, 5 East 89th Street, which is building was historically associated with. But that the proposed cubic volume of the sixth-floor addition, while taller than the occupiable space contained within, fully contains the elevator and HVAC equipment, thus presenting itself as a pure architectural form while reducing the number of visible rooftop accretions at the roof. That the proposed rooftop addition will not be visible over the front facade from directly across the street and will only be visible from limited view corridors, primarily over secondary facades for moderate to long distances. That the two-story glazed rear addition approved at the north elevation has been eliminated on the design and replaced with an angled glazed wall, which will maintain a sense of historic massing at the rear of the building. That the proposed angled glazed wall at the north elevation will only be visible from the break and the street wall on Fifth Avenue in the context of other rear facades of buildings. And that the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural or historic character of the building or streetscape.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Devonshire?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum? Mr. Goldblum?
I'm muted.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and one refused, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll now break for lunch. We'll take a 30-minute recess. We will be turning off the webinar. So anyone who is here as an attendee should exit the meeting now and rejoin the meeting in 30 minutes. And if you are watching, you can go back to our our main YouTube channel to continue the live stream where we left off. And when we return in 30 minutes, we will also take about five minutes to make sure once we have started the YouTube live stream again, we'll take about five minutes to make sure that we have are able to get everyone re-entered into the meeting. So we'll see you all at 1 o'clock. Thank you.
And I see the team from 29J is as as in there as an attendee. And can we ask you to move to leave the meeting now? So Andrew Torres, Tim Friat, Joseph Meng, Christopher Hazel. Could you all please leave the meeting now? What's the reminder? Okay, um, Andrew Torres, Christopher Hazel, Michael Winesier. Could you all please leave the meeting now? You can return in 30 minutes at 1 o'clock.
All right.
I don't know if Caroline or Corey have access to the applicant 29J? Because if I remove them, they can't come back.
I don't have Andrew Torres on the list of applicant team members. So, you know, there are quite a few and he's not one of them. So if we have to remove him, I think that's not going to hurt the next presentation. But I don't have his contact information.
And what about the other two?
The other two do not appear to be on the list either on as any team member.
Right.
Okay, let me try one more time. Andrew Torres, Christopher Hazel, Michael Winesier, could you please leave?
We need you to voluntarily leave the meeting because we're stopping the meeting. And if we remove you, you will not be able to have access back into the meeting when we resume our afternoon session.
Well, just to be clear, they won't have access in the same way they have now. They call in the different, a different phone.
Device.
Computer they could, so but.
Yeah.
We got one, one heard you. Well, I think we just.
Well, we're going to have to remove you. So Andrew Torres, Christopher Hazel, we're going to have to remove you now.
It it does.
Unless you can remove yourself.
Hold on. I do see Andrew Torres as listed as 29J.
I don't see him on the list. Where is that?
That's what he's named himself. Oh, I'm sorry.
He testified or something.
Testifying, okay.
So I, yeah, no, we, oh, there we go. Okay, so Christopher Hazel, last chair.
And if we remove you, Christopher Hazel, you will have to rejoin the meeting on a different device.
And if you're just wanting to observe the proceedings, you can watch on YouTube when live feed comes back. Right. All right, I'm going to remove him.
Okay.
All right.
I got him.
All right. See you all at 1 o'clock.
Okay, and Commissioner's reminding you all to please turn your audio and video off.
Yeah, they've got it. Okay.
Okay. I mean, you don't have, now it's locked, so it's just us. They don't, you don't necessarily have to, but.
It's it's better.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
All right, see you soon.
Yeah.
Does still say we're live on YouTube, by the way.